Okay.
Good evening, everyone. The previous meeting started a little exceeded a lot of time, so we're starting later this evening. But welcome to our regular council meeting tonight, Tuesday, January 17th. I'd ask you if you have a cellphone to turn it on silent. And I'm going to call this meeting to order, and we're going to start with a moment of silence. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd ask Clerk Domingo to call the roll.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. We'll begin with presentations. Yep, sorry. Mayor and councilmember comments. Are there any comments from the council? Questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember French, and then councilmember Lawler.
Thank you. Just wanted to announce a couple of things. The first is that the Luddington Center at 101 North Superior Street is now open. The hours for that building are from eight o'clock in the morning, Monday through Friday, from eight o'clock in the morning until 8:00 PM. And on Saturday, from 10:00 in the morning until 8:00 PM. We hope to have Michigan Works moving in by the end of the month, first part and next. And the Career and Internship Center at the college will also be partnering with Michigan Works to deliver employment services for citizens of Albion and for Albion College students. Second thing is the AmeriCorps Vista team has been here for six months. They are in the midst of an Albion Forward survey that's been going on. We've been, the vistas have been located in lots of different places of business, City Hall, Family Fair, a couple of local churches. We'd encourage everyone, if they're interested in taking the survey, they can come to the Luddington Center and take either an electronic version of the survey online, or they can get a paper version as well. Anybody who takes the survey, completes the survey, can be entered into a drawing for one of 25 $10 FelPash, oh, sorry, Family Fair gift cards. Now, we're going to get that right. And so, we encourage all citizens to participate in that survey. We've had some pretty good luck so far. We're about a third of the way there in terms of the necessary number of surveys collected in order to make things significant statistically. So, thanks very much for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lawler.
I just want to say thank you to the community that have sent me emails or contacted me on Facebook or Nextdoor, giving me their comments, concerns, and even sharing their frustrations with me on anything that I may post about trying to help Albion move forward. And I look to have more comments and frustrations as the year goes on. So, I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Are there any other council comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. Item A, under Presentations, introduction of Albion Public Safety, Canine Officer Lucy, Lucy Jo? Okay. Chief Kip.
Hello. Most of you have probably already seen Lucy Jo on Facebook and other places here in town. But back, I think it was September this year, September, October this year, received an email from an officer in North Carolina who breeds bloodhounds, and with an offer to any of the Michigan chiefs to accept one at no cost from her. So, we made contact with her. We put out a request for anybody in the department interested in handling the dog. Carolyn Napi, Officer Napi, was the person who we chose to handle the dog, and the dog will be staying with her. It's odd for departments in this area to use bloodhounds for trailing or tracking. It's not something that's been used in this area in a long time that I'm aware of. On the East Coast and down south, they still use them a lot. So, one of the things that we have here in town is we have a lot of crime that occurs on foot. People break into houses, they break into garages, and stuff like that. And we have a difficult time solving those because we don't have any suspects, we don't know where the property goes. My hope is, by having this dog, we'll be able to track those people down and maybe solve some of those crimes that we've been unable to solve in the past. It'll also give us the ability to do search and rescue as well. Shepherd canines can do that, but they don't, they can't track the way a bloodhound does. Bloodhounds have 10 times the sense that most dogs have when it comes to being able to smell and being able to differentiate between smells. Bloodhound's been known to track over 100 miles. They can track people after they get into cars to locations. So, it's kind of amazing what bloodhounds can do. Our hope only is that Lucy Jo will be able to do those things as well, so, but time will tell. We train these dogs a little differently than they do the shepherds. The shepherds are usually trained before we get them, and so they're usually nine months to a year old. When we get them, they're fully trained, and then the handler is trained with the dog. Bloodhounds work a little different. You get them as a puppy, and you work them, and they start their training at this age right now, and she's already done some tracking. My hope is, she'll be done with her training sometime this fall, and she'll be on the road patrolling with Carolyn here in Albion, even though she's riding with her now. Anybody have any questions about it?
Councilmember.
Can we take a five-minute puppy break?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Next is item B, Michigan Department of Transportation update on M-99 Superior Street project. Can you state your name?
Yes. My name is Brandon Mauer. I'm with the Michigan Department of Transportation, Marshall, TSC. I am the Traffic Safety and Operations Engineer there. I would like to thank you all for inviting us to come back and give an update on what we'll have going on in the city of Albion in the next five years here construction-wise. So, we'll start off with our M-99 Superior Street reconstruction that will begin this summer. So, this is going to be quite a large project in the downtown corridor of Albion. We're just going to start out, where is the project at? So, it'll run from about Ash Street up to Vine Street with a small section extending onto Michigan Avenue to the east. What is the project? Well, it's the complete reconstruction of M-99 in this area. So, replacement of the sub base, concrete base, the bricks, and the curb and gutter, along with all the utility work, which includes a storm sewer and the water main. In addition, there will be some safety upgrades that we're implementing with this project as well. So, that'll include the upgrade of the signal at Superior Street, Michigan Avenue, the four-to-three lane conversion, and pedestrian bumpouts. We'll cover each of those items more in depth as we continue through the presentation. Why is the project needed? For anybody that's driven the corridor, you probably are very well aware of all the bumps, zigs, and zags, and the bricks that are in pretty poor condition. So, that speaks for itself in terms of we need to get in there and fix this so that you guys have a much smoother and easier ride each day. So, what is the construction schedule? At this point, we're going to be moving forward with the notification system. Every week, emails will be sent out from our construction staff updating the people on the list. We'd like to get a list from the city of people that need to be notified each week. What we'll be doing, anything that changes in the construction schedule, so that way you can plan accordingly or let the public know as necessary. Additionally, biweekly onsite public meetings will be held. Place yet to be determined. I was talking to our construction staff, they're working on that now, such that people can come in if there's any kind of questions, concerns, or even some compliments that they'd like to share, they're more than welcome to at that point. Stage one will begin around May 2017 to September. This will be, as you can see, the southern portion there, the green. We'd like to get that accomplished prior to the Festival de Forks, so we can have that open, and the festival continue as planned while we're working on the northern section, which should be a little bit reduced from about June to November, varying timeframes. And it's important to remember through all of this, we're going to try to keep Erie and Cass Street open as long as possible. Those will only be closed down long enough to complete construction of those, because those are some of the higher-volume intersections that people will travel through. We're going to implement detour routes through here. We tried to work with the city and the county to develop some detour routes that would be the easiest to follow. It was a pretty good experience we've had. So, we'll be using the Irwin Avenue, Eaton Street, in addition to Eaton, to B Drive North and Clark Street, kind of short to keep people moving around and still able to access the local businesses. So, it'll really try to minimize the amount of time people are spent off of their normal route. Why must traffic be detoured? I know this is a question we get a lot, is why can't we just do part width? Well, would the brick pavement that we've got out there present some unique opportunities because of, when you lay it, you have to lay everything from between concrete header to concrete header. If we were to try to run traffic on half of a brick pavement, the bricks would shift, and it would compromise the integrity of the roads. So, we want to create a very good, solid structure that'll last for years, and this is the best way to do that. So, what is a four-to-three lane conversion? This is essentially where we take a road cross-section that has two lanes in each direction, and we turn it into one with one lane in each direction with a center turn lane dedicated for left turns for both bounds of traffic. This kind of further illustrates there, we have the two through lanes, northbound, southbound, the center left turn lane, so you can access any of the driveways, intersections, and make a left turn outside of the through movements. In addition to this, it provides both parking space, we already have existing, but a shoulder which will be available for bike use. It also gives you that extra buffer space when you open your car door, so hopefully you won't have it get ripped off if someone comes by there not noticing that you parked or trying to exit your vehicle. Have other roads been converted to three lanes? We have done this in the past. This first one here is in Benton Harbor. It may be a little hard to see, but that was actually a five-lane roadway, and we've reduced that down to three lanes because of the volumes necessitated that, and it reduces that weaving motion between the through lanes that you can sometimes experience with faster or slower traffic. Similarly, more closer, a little closer to home is US 12 in Coldwater. We did this recently as well with a pretty high-volume road, and it's working out quite well. I've heard very good things from the city down there. They really enjoy the safety benefits they've gained from this. So, what are the benefits? As I said, the safety's the primary one. That's why we're really focusing in on this. Some more slides here, we're a little straight. So, for instance, in the four-lane cross-section, a lot of, you have to sit in the through lane, the left lane, to try to make your left turn. If there's oncoming traffic while you're waiting, someone could come up behind you if they're not paying attention in rear end. In this circumstance, there's a center left turn lane that gets you out of that through lane and provides a safer area for you to make your turn in. Additionally, with the two lanes, sometimes you can't see the person in the far lane if you are trying to make a left turn. The three-lane cross-section reduces this, everyone is in the same lane coming at you. And then again, the lateral offset from the parked cars. So, this just gives you that little bit of a safe area to get out of your vehicle without having to worry about the cars encroaching too much on you or removing your car door or hitting you. Additionally, we've seen through studies that it produces a 19% to 47% overall reduction in crashes. With this, we're going to implement pedestrian bumpouts. So, what are these? Benefits of their safety again. So, this is essentially a situation where now you have to cross not only the four lanes with the parking lane, this brings that out into the roadway a little bit, such that the three lanes are still open and the shoulders are still open, but you don't have to cross those parked vehicles when the pedestrian signal allows that. So, it reduces it by approximately 16 feet total for the eight-foot car phase, parked cars. Additionally, it'll take down the amount of cars, you've probably seen it before, illegally parked there at the intersection, reducing sight distance at the intersection. This really removes that as an option. You can't park in that area. So, one of the things we talked about was the upgrade of the signal at Superior and Michigan. Well, with this, that's part of a signal project, we moved that up with this project. Now, in 2018, we're actually coming through with a couple of locations that were identified as needing the modernization. Some of their structures are reaching their age, so they needed to be changed. The issue was, with the traffic volumes the way they were, they're being considered for removal. These two signals are located at Eaton Street in Watson and Michigan and Clark. So, there's lots of words up here that essentially kind of typelines out the removal process. The crux of it is the federal highway requires a minimum of one signal warrant to be met to retain a signal in order to spend federal money to upgrade the signal. So, if the signal warrants are not met, then MDOT follows a step-by-step procedure to determine if the signal should be removed. First, data is collected, and that includes traffic volumes and pedestrian volumes. If warrants are not met, we then meet onsite with geometric specialists and police authorities to discuss any other circumstances that may influence the need or whether the signal should be removed. And then after field review, we make contact with local agencies to discuss it further. After public notice, the signal is then placed in flash for 24-hour periods, seven days a week for a minimum of 90 days to evaluate the effectiveness of the new signal operations. During those 90 days, we collect the data, and we are in constant contact with different officials and coming out onsite to make sure that it is operating the way we intend it to. And once the 90-day period is up, we evaluate it again, take some more traffic counts, we contact the city as well, and contact local law enforcement to see if there's any kind of crashes or anything that we did not hear about. And we take all that together and determine whether we will keep the signal or not. It's important to note, though, there is one clause in this, that if the local government decides that they want to keep the signals, there is a signal retention agreement that may be signed. This does dictate that all costs, maintenance, upgrades, or, and the operations, day-to-day operations, will have to be paid by the city, because our signals are funded by federal funding, and if they don't get warrants, we cannot pay for them to remain in operation. To get a little bit into what we've done, Eaton and Watson was last upgraded in the year 2000. We received a request in 2014 to analyze the signal for removal. Traffic counts were collected in 2014. A meeting was held with MSP and MDOT geometric officials at the site in March 2016. A meeting with the city was held later in March 2016. The signal was placed in flash, June 29, 2016. We wanted to put it in at that point so we could encompass the start of school and try to get any of the pedestrians coming through there, children, and then school bus volumes. Council data were, again, collected in September to try to encompass that. Review, we're currently reviewing the data. Once the final recommendation is, we will approach the city and discuss the options at that point. Kind of show here, this is a, the signals, one A and one B, these are the two we look at primarily. The green and red lines on both of them show the threshold volumes that need to be met for the minor street, is the green line, and the major street is the red line. Now, as you can see in the first graph, most points within kind of your normal day, it starts at about 7:00 AM till 5:00, are over for the major street, but the minor street does not meet. For this to meet warrants, they have to meet, both be above that threshold for eight hours throughout the day. Now, these are, one A and one B, these are combined, just one warrant out of nine that we consider for signalization. So, as one A and one B didn't, were not met at this location. Similarly, for pedestrian volumes, they were not met at this location either. These are the two of the ones that we look at the most when we're considering signals. So, looking at the pedestrian warrant, a minimum of 75 pedestrians an hour crossing Watson is needed. Maximum number that we were able to count was, is 12. Excuse me. School crossing warrant, a minimum of 20 schoolchildren, and adequate gaps in the traffic stream to cross the street is what we're looking for. Based on Tuesday, April 12, we had five schoolchildren cross the intersection. And there's other considerations we can take at this location in lieu of a signal that'll be much more effective and less costly. M-99 at Clark is the other intersection we looked at. This one, we, again, went through all the same process at approximately the same time in speaking with all different officials. Now, Eaton and Watson, we put into effect such that Eaton has through traffic or an amber flashing yellow and a red stop. Michigan, or, excuse me, M-99 at Clark had to go into a four-way stop condition based on the geometric, the kind of the skew that you have approaching there. We didn't want to give somebody through traffic when there was limited sight distance. So, again, we're in the similar circumstances. Warrant one A and one B were not met. Again, for pedestrian volumes, it was not met, but with a four-way stop that provides the best opportunities for pedestrians to cross. So, at this point, traffic modeling has shown that the vehicle delays should decrease with the removal of the signals. They should operate as well, if not better, with the new conditions, the stop conditions. We've analyzed it. I think we've only had one incident at Clark and Michigan, and it was a rear-end crash with no injuries or anything associated with that. So far, I haven't heard of anything else. All the site visits I've conducted, they seem to be moving quite well, and I am not aware of any complaints in terms of operations that I've received at this point. But we're always open. We're always looking for public input and any kind of information we can gather, because we want to try to serve everyone as best as possible. Yes, that's the update on what we've got going for the next two years and through about five years, if you have any questions or concerns.
Are there any? Councilmember Brown.
I do, I do have a concern. I represent Precinct Three, and you mentioned detour streets.
Yes.
And Irwin Avenue being one of those.
Yes.
Now, I know years before, Irwin Ave was a detour street for another project, and that street still has not recovered from the wear and tear of that project. So, with this project and that street being identified as another detour street, I'm really concerned about the condition of that street. So, is there any way we could seek some funding or something to fix that upon completion of this project?
What we will do throughout the life of the project is that we will maintain that road. So, it's not our intent to detour our traffic onto it and then create more damage and then just walk away. So, we will try to maintain it at the condition, an acceptable condition for highway operations. We unfortunately do not have funding in the budget to fix the road or upgrade it. We have limited funding, and the federal government dictates how that can be spent.
Councilmember Brown.
Okay, just one more question. So, you say you will try to maintain, what exactly does that mean? What do you mean by maintain that?
It varies based on the kind of conditions that we'll experience out there and what'll get, but essentially, it'll, I can't, in my mind, well, if there's any potholes that open up or anything, we can do kind of patching and just fix the road up in that sense. That's what we'll be looking at. Anything larger-scale repaving or anything like that, we simply don't have the money in the budget for.
Thank you. Are there, are there any other questions from council? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, under Presentations, Oakland Dialysis Center, Richard Lindsay.
All right, got my T-dip fully worked out. Thank you, Mayor Brown and council. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Again, I think I've met all of you except for Councilmember Spicer, so good to meet you and good to see all of you tonight. I just wanted to talk for a few minutes, and the city manager told me to keep it short, so I'll try to keep it short. It's really hard to follow Lucy Jo. My wife wanted me to bring Lucy Jo home with me, so I said, I don't think they're going to let me do that. So, Oakland Hospital. Let me talk a little bit, first of all, about my position. Executive Director of Development and Community Legislative Affairs. Part of my role is to go out and talk to the local legislative bodies. I don't think Oakland Hospital's done this in quite a while, maybe never. So, the two chief communities that we serve are the City of Marshall and the City of Albion. So, with your permission, I'd like to come back maybe every quarter and make a report about what we're doing, do the same in Marshall. Obviously, cover Homer to Concha, and the places we serve, probably on an annual basis, provide them with an update. We also plan to update Rotary regularly, Chamber. I'm looking for other avenues, if there's ways that you guys have for ideas of how we can push information out. I'm interested in hearing what information you might have and how you would like me to do that. Small print, I just want to give you a little bit of background about Oakland Hospital. Opened in 1925 in Marshall with a 12 beds. Housed in, if you know where Oakland Hospital's at, there was literally a house right in the middle of where the big hospital's at. Now, that original home was basically the financial piece that started Oakland Hospital. It was deeded to the E.M. Brown Charitable Circle Association, which is now the nonprofit by which Oakland is known. So, we are actually what's called a doing business as, and that is our legal name, is the L.E.M. Brown Charitable Circle Association. Still sits on that same location. Over the years, Oakland's been strongly supported by the Marshall community. In 1948, there was a public campaign launched to build a new 47-bed hospital. In 1962, the hospital was expanded to 69 beds. In 1971, the hospital was on the verge of having its license revoked by the state of Michigan. I actually went to the community of Marshall with a request to raise $500,000 to build and renovate a new hospital, and the community ended up raising $700,000 to do that. The expansion was completed in 1974. In 1975, Oakland opened the original 12,000-square-foot Wright Medical Building. If you stand in the parking garage in Marshall and look across the street to the north, there's a building there that's known as the Wright Medical Building. It's actually a separate legal address. The hospital has grown all the way around that. 1980, intensive care unit opened through steady growth and through closure of other businesses in Marshall, like Eaton and State Farm. Oakland had become Marshall's largest employer. In 2007, we completed a $27 million expansion that added a third and fourth floor, and converted all our acute care rooms to private rooms. We were one of the first hospitals to do that in the state. Actually, Henry Ford Allegiance is in the process of doing that right now in Jackson. By 2013, Oakland was providing 27% of its services off-site, including locations in Albion, Homer to Concha, Homer, Albion, Homer twice, Albion, Beetal Lake, and Olivet. And in 2013, Junior Williams became President and CEO, taking over from Rob Prover, who had been President and CEO since the early 70s. Oakland Hospital today, a regional healthcare organization licensed for 77 acute care beds and a 17-bed inpatient psychiatric unit. We're one of two psychiatric treatment facilities in Calton County, the other one's in Battle Creek. Our service area includes Calton County and a little bit of Branch County, a little bit of Eaton County. We have medical staff with more than 150 providers and 35 specialties. So, that's a little bit of a preview. Last year, we actually came to, ended up working quite closely with the city of Albion relative to the development of our Oakland Dialysis Center of Albion LLC. So, legal disclosure, this is a separate legal entity. This is not Oakland Hospital. Of course, you'll see the branding and whatnot is very closely allied with us. It was developed in partnership with Facenius Medical Care North America, which actually operates the Dialysis Center in Marshall. So, it's a joint venture with them. It's an 8,800 square-foot, 12-chair Dialysis Center. We actually, it was finished back in May. We had an open house. So, one of the first things when I started, and of course, you go to law school, learn how to do open houses, I never, this was the first time I'd ever actually organized an open house. So, I said, how many people actually come to an open house for a Dialysis Center? I'm not sure, that sounds like a really exciting thing. We had, I think, 150 people show up. Used a local vendor for the food, which is fantastic. I know Mayor Brown was there, I'm pretty sure Andy French was there. Not sure if anybody else was, so I hope, Councilmember Reed was there as well. So, it was a wonderful response from the community. Part of what happens when we, when we opened it, it was legally done and finished, but then we had to run one person through the, through an entire cycle before we could be licensed by the state and by the federal government. So, that, believe it or not, took from May until September to get that done. We actually officially opened for business in October, and we're now moving to two shifts in that location. This is the, this is the location, it's out by I-94. And to the west of the And to the west of this location is also our clinic, and we have physical therapy, and we have a number of doctors that are located there as well. Uh, this was about a three and a half million dollar investment. Um, I will say that, and I didn't have the pleasure of working with the city on this, but my understanding was we needed to have a zoning change. We also needed to have some things done with sewer and water, and it was a seamless, flawless process, which is what, what you want to hear in working with city government. So, uh, thank you for the, to the city manager and for the city departments for doing that. I did have the one little part that I was involved with at the end, is we actually had to split this property from our existing property. Um, it was done within twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, but I, I think everything we could possibly ask for is about ease of working with Albion city government. So, um, a very good experience for us and for, um, and locally, we also use the local builder, Gordon Martin Builders, to, to actually do the work and build the facility. So turned out really well. We're really happy with the reception in, in the community. Um, really happy to have it done. A couple of things we have going on, and I, this is where I'm gonna not give you forty-five minutes of what I could tell you about, but kind of some highlights of things we've worked on two thousand and sixteen. Uh, we've applied for, with the state, we have to get what's called a certificate of need from the state to show that we have the numbers, uh, in order to have a fifth operating room, so we're, we have applied for that. We expect to get the approval from the state, uh, on February first, and we'll be building in two thousand and seventeen, investment of another two and a half million dollars in that process. Uh, we continue to partner, partner with the City of Albion, the City of Marshall, Albion-Marshall Connector. Obviously, this has been very important, uh, for transporting people back and forth between Albion and Marshall for a variety of reasons, but one of them was healthcare. Uh, and at this point, um, it's my understanding that there is a, a grant that's being applied for to, uh, for a study relative for, to a bigger, um, transportation solution. So Oklon looks forward to partnering again with Albion and Marshall and various entities relative to that. Uh, we continue to partner through the Albion Healthcare Alliance, and that, that entity was set up, uh, when the hospital, I think it predated the hospital closing, but it took on a, a bigger role when the hospital closed in Albion. Uh, Oklon has been a member of that along with Bronson, um, for a number of years. We support that both financially, and I also serve as Oklon's representative on that board. Earth Peak Surgeons, we had a, a couple of our Earth Peak Surgeons that, um, left and went to Bronson. And so we had a period in time where we had a bit of a revenue issue as they left and their revenue left with them. Uh, we have hired two new Earth Peak Surgeons. The, the volumes have picked up significantly. And we have a third that was, that was still on staff from when before our, our other surgeons left and went to Bronson. So we're very strong in that, in that area. Um, the Health Network Planning Grant, probably spent an hour talking about that. So I did bring a copy of, of this. I'm not sure if you've seen this, so I'll provide this to city manager. This is the actual application that was made. Um, I'm glad to answer any questions about it, because that's probably a whole other discussion by itself. Um, the Borges Collaboration, uh, now, certainly in the year that we've, uh, we're collaborating with Borges. And basically, the next thing that we do, either we being either Oklon or Borges in Calhoun County or Branch County, will be done by what's called Think Health, and that entity would operate whatever that might look like. We don't have anything right now that's being planned relative to that, um, but it's basically a way to ally with another system and continue to cooperate and provide, um, high-quality services in Calhoun County and in Branch County. Uh, we've been very involved in the community over the years. Just a couple of things that we've done, uh, in the last year. Uh, we partnered with the NAACP for the School Backpack Event at, um, at Harrington. Um, supported the Albion Healthcare Alliance and a fundraiser, been very involved with the Chamber. Uh, regularly attend community events like Eggs and Issues. Um, my coworker, Bill Asmat, uh, led the process where, um, we talked with a number of different people in the Albion community, conducted what we call the gap analysis. And again, this is the idea that hospitals used to sit, well, many of them, they sit and they wait for sick people to come to them. Rather than doing that, we would be engaged in the community, finding out what areas we can serve. And again, the, uh, the help, the grant application for the Health Network is, is part of that concept of how, how can we provide healthcare in the community. Um, also recently helped fund the second page of the Bohm Theater. Um, and we were able to treat the Harrington students to a movie popcorn drink coming up here in the near future. Um, Albion again is a central part of Oklon's service area, and we're investing in this community. And I just, I had not had the opportunity to meet Dr. Phillips. I had a conversation with her today. Asked her to come over and talk with you this evening, and she said, really short notice, but we just hired Dr. Phillips at the end of the year. Uh, we actually had her out meeting the various Oklon staff today, and she's gonna be, uh, in the family practice here in Albion, so located up by the highway. Uh, really excited to have her on staff, and she said, be clear, I'm passionate about two things. Um, Oklon Hospital and community of Albion, so she's really excited about being back, back in Albion. Um, so you guys all know I'm a Facebook nut, right? So Oklon is on Facebook, and we're actively trying to build our page, putting all of our information out there. Um, the, our webpage, we spent, uh, our resources trying to get every piece of our Oklon Hospital website, uh, to work. We have things like, uh, uh, tours of the hospital rooms that you can go in and, and show on, a video tour. Lots of different pieces on the webpage. If you see any issues with anything, tell me, because we'll fix it. It's one thing about a webpage is, city manager knows that there's a lot of pieces of webpage, just get them all, all working correctly. Um, my cellphone number, call me anytime with issues. Uh, Bill Asmat, also, you can call him anytime with issues. Um, that's my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have, and I will provide, uh, city manager a little copy of the grant. Feel free to distribute that. And I did also provide you with the information about, coming up, uh, on March fourth is our annual auction. And this is a lot of fun. I'm not sure how much this has been, um, talked about in the Albion community. I talked about it at the Albion Chamber Board Meeting today, so I want to make sure that all of you are invited. Um, the information's on there. You can go to the webpage, go to the website, or go to the Facebook page. You can find out information about it, but please join us. It's a lot of fun if you get, you get the opportunity. Any questions at all? Glad to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, Item D under Presentations, twenty-seventh Annual Cardboard, um, should be Cardboard Classic, I think, sled race. Um, February eleventh, twenty seventeen. Stacy?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, first, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to speak. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Justin Renninger. Uh, I joined the Albion Public Safety Department back in September of two thousand and sixteen. When I joined, I was quickly amazed at how many festivals and events this city and this community has. Uh, and I found it to be, uh, amazing. My wife and kids love it. They come and participate. One of the things that I was very excited about was the Cardboard Classic. I thought that would be so much fun. Tear down a hill in the snow and, and a cardboard sled. When I found out that it wasn't going to happen, I was a little bummed, and so I kind of pouted. And thanks to the city manager and Chief Kip, we've kind of partnered together, and we're gonna host the event with the city and the Public Safety Department. So I'm excited to announce that it's February eleventh at Victory Park. One of the concerns in years past is, what if we don't have snow? And right now, it doesn't look good. So, we have a snow day. Two weeks from the eleventh, which is February twenty-fifth, is our, our snow day. So if we don't have it on the eleventh, everyone, stand on your head, spin it around three times, whatever we need to do, and we'll have it on the twenty-fifth. Should we not have snow on the twenty-fifth, we will still do, uh, the judging part of it for the, the creativity part. With that being said, one thing we've discussed is we would love to have mayor and council members participate as judges, uh, or any other way you'd like to participate, but we would love to have you guys.
I, I, I.
I think there should be a battle between the precincts of, uh, you know, who wins the sled race, but you know. So, uh, if anyone is interested in helping, I know some have already expressed interest. Uh, we'd love to have you as judges, uh, and, and participate in the event in any way, um, on the eleventh. So, does anyone have any questions, I guess?
Do you have a copy of the, are, are your sleds and things gonna still be made the way they were when you were at the Chamber?
Yes, I didn't say. Um, so one of the things that, that Chamber was concerned about was in years past, cardboard was always donated by, uh, the cardboard company out in the industrial park, and they no longer wanted to do that. So that was kind of the big hang-up for Chamber. We said, well, we'll figure it out. And we've already, uh, obtained a sponsor, Knoff, Knoff Insulation, uh, has nine pallets full of misprinted, brand-new cardboard, sitting in their warehouse that someone went, oops, we made a mistake. Uh, and so they're gonna give it to us. So, uh, we've also partnered with Haas Trucking. Uh, they are going to pick the cardboard up actually tomorrow, and that will be placed out here by the fire station or behind City Hall somewhere, um, so that the public can come get free cardboard. Uh, and then, yes, it's kind of just like in years past. Tape, glue, that's it. No staples, no wood, no nothing. Tape, glue, cardboard. Get creative. Have fun with it. So.
But you know, my grandson and I last year made a Noah's Ark, and, and we got it all put together. It was really, really nice, but they made us take the stuffed animals off.
Are there, are there any other council questions? Thank you. Oh, Councilmember.
I, I just wanted to thank Public Safety and the city. Uh, this is a tradition that's been going on for a very long time. Uh, when my kids were little, we used to participate actively. I was a judge in the years past, so I'm just really thrilled. It's one of these iconic events that, that people come to Albion from outside to, to participate, so thanks so much for picking up the slack.
Absolutely. I believe each one of you have, uh, the, the flyer. We've also passed out to, uh, the public here, a smaller version of this. We are still looking for sponsors. Um, if anyone has any connections on some sponsors, they can contact Stacy or I, um, and, and we'd love to have them, so.
Different donation levels. So there's one hundred, two hundred and fifty, and five hundred dollar donations, but also we've been able to secure donations from organizations that could give supplies or a P.A. system or what have you, um, that even, those kinds of dollar amounts.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, before they go, I just want to thank, um, everyone. Um, it's really been a team effort, recreation departments, um, Stacy in my office, Officer Renninger, as well as, um, Chief Kip, and several officers. In fact, the entire, um, city has been very much involved in picking up the helm and making this happen. We've had a number of businesses already, including Oklon, who have indicated a willingness to help sponsor the event. So, um, registration is available online at, um, albion dot rec desk dot com. So we're taking registrations, and we're looking forward to a really great event.
We will take registration day of this year because of the late notice. That has not been the case in years past. You've always had to preregister. We will take registration day of just because of the, the short notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Item E under Presentations, update on the Bohm Theater, Mary Slater.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mary Slater, and I am Chair of the Board of the Friends of the Bohm Theater, and I'm just really excited to be here tonight to tell you about the opening of the Bohm Two. I think you all received in your packet a special invitation. The, um, official ribbon cutting is on January the twenty-fifth, and that will be around six fifteen in front of the theater. But before that, at five thirty, we've invited some VIP guests to have a private tour of the Bohm Two and see what it looks like. And then we'll have the ribbon cutting, and then the public will gather in the main theater and go by small groups into the Bohm Two, because it's only forty seats, so not everybody could get in there at one time. So while small groups are going through the, the, the small theater, people will be just mingling and having light refreshments in the main theater. So we felt that it was essential that we open this second theater because we learned about all the restrictions of the movie industry, about what you can have and how long you have to have it, and that you can't show other things and so on. This will greatly expand our opportunities for, uh, filming. So, um, we've secured funds through grants and through a loan from the rural development, uh, but we still are gonna need support money to, to pay the, the cost of operations. And then I just want to let you know too that we will still have our, uh, Flashback Fridays on Friday morning, and the rest of January features politic, political movies like All the President's Men and Wag the Dog. And then, uh, February is celebrating Black History Month with four movies, uh, related to that theme. A Raisin in the Sun, To Kill a Mockingbird, Ray, and Malcolm X. And as time goes on, we'll be able to show these movies at times, I mean, these are ten o'clock in the morning still, but we'll be able to show them at times that more people can go to it. And just to comment too, people ask me about, well, why don't you get us in such a movie? We don't have total control over that. Nancy Doyle, the executive director, puts in requests for movies, but that doesn't mean we necessarily get them, and sometimes we've been told, well, your theater's just too small, your audience is too small, you can't have that movie, or who knows what reason. Sometimes there's no reason. So, um, we're certainly open and want to hear what kind of movies the, the community wants to see and make every effort to bring those. So, any other questions?
Thank you so much for everything that you're, you're doing at Bohm. I think it's been a fantastic success. Are there any questions or comments from council? Thank you so much. We will move on to citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only, uh, and to no more than five minutes, and we're asking for proper decorum. Are there any citizens' comments about, uh, any of the agenda items? Mr. Arnold?
I'd like to ask, uh, oh, excuse me, I should know by now, right, Wayne Arnold, nine oh six Hall Street. I've got a question for Mr., uh, Mr. Lindsay in regards to the, the Dialysis Center. Um, now, I've heard that, uh, the Dialysis Center would only be cer- be accepting certain types of insurance. Is that true?
Well, I, I think the, the best, that might, unless you wanna.
Well, okay, I, I tell you.
Okay.
Let me tell you what I've heard. Okay, this is what I've heard. I've heard that, uh, I've heard that, uh, the Dialysis Center is going on to be certain, certain types of insurance. So that would, that, that would kind of alleviate the people that's on the state or on, uh, on general assistance and those type of people. So I didn't know if that was true or not. I, I, I'm glad that he spoke on that, so I can get some clarity on that. And then, and then when, when would the, uh, the Albion residents be able to use the Dialysis Center here versus going over to Marshall? I thought it was set up to, so it could, uh, I mean, so Albion residents could benefit from this Dialysis Center. So, uh, so I'm wondering, um, I understand s- some, some people are able to use it, but I, I, I was, I was told it was, it was only be, be accepting certain insurances. So if that's the case, then it's only certain people are be able to take advantage of the Dialysis Center. Other than that, it seems like to me that the one with lesser insurance or, or, or state insurance got to stay over in Marshall, but this brand-new, brand-new Dialysis Center, um, so if I can get some clarification on that. So I, I want that clarification so I could pass it on to my family members, because I got family members going to Marshall. Of course, they got insurance, but I'm just figuring out how they're chosen, and is it chosen by insurances? Because if it's chosen by insurances, I guess you know what that means. So if, if, if at some point he can, he could answer those two questions, then I could pass it on to some of my family members, and maybe they'll know when they'll be able to, you know, go to the Dialysis Center. I hear versus, versus, uh, you know, having to get transportation to go to Marshall. That, that don't make much sense to me. So, uh, at some point, uh, if you could answer that for me, just for my own personal, uh, just so I'll know to pass it on to my family.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. I think it's probably best to have that, and then, you know, once we get the information, we can disseminate it too, so.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your question. Are there any other citizen comments about agenda items? Okay. Uh, seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, consent calendar. Uh, there's just the approval of regular council session minutes from January third. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Uh, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Uh, we will move on to items for individual discussion. Agenda item A, request approval, uh, le- letter of understanding with the Albion Clerical Alliance, and that's a roll call vote. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved and, moved and supported. Uh, we'll have discussion. I'll have to ask the city manager to provide some, uh, explanation of that.
Okay. Mayor and council, if you recall with the two thousand and seventeen budget, um, we had a reorganization which involved the creation of a new position that combined the Human Resources Clerk with the, um, Albion Department of Public Safety's Records Clerk. Um, in regards to that, normally when you have, um, someone handling human resources responsibilities, because they also are part of the union negotiations, they are exempt from, um, being a member of the. they are exempt from, um, being a member of the union. When the Records Clerk for Public Safety has been in the past a full-time position, they have been a member of the A C A, the Albion Clerical Association. So, we have an agreement with them that's before you, for your approval, and they, um, the union has signed off on that. That, for the duration of any period of time in which the Human Resources responsibilities are being handled by the Records Clerk, that they would be excluded from that union.
Are there any, uh, questions, comments, or concerns from council? Okay. Seeing none, uh, ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Uh, agenda item B, request approval of first reading ordinance, two thousand seventeen dash one, an ordinance to designate the city of, uh, designate the office of the city clerk as an administrative officer of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there support to that?
Support.
Moved and supported. Discussion.
Thank you. Mayor and council, if you recall, in November, we had a, um, charter amendment which realigned the departments of the city to be, um, reflected to the departments that actually were in place. And, um, as part of that discussion, we were looking at the city clerk's office as well to make it a direct report to the city manager. Um, in the past, it had been a direct report to the Finance Department, but because her duties are really not, um, involving the Finance Department any longer, it seemed to make sense that this would be an independent department that reports directly to the city manager. So, that's what's before you. There's no financial impact, um, relative to that, um, proposed change.
Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from council? So, basically, yeah, the city ma- the city clerk is its own, uh, office, yeah. Um, okay, uh, roll call vote.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Uh, agenda item C, request approval, resolution two thousand seventeen dash two, a resolution in support of countywide transit service plan for Calhoun County.
So moved.
Moved and su-
Support.
Moved and supported. Uh, are there any, well, I'll start off with explanation.
Mayor and council, um, we're really excited about this opportunity. Calhoun County, um, has taken the lead in pursuing, looking at countywide transit system, um, in part because we all recognize, especially on the eastern portion, eastern portion, I get them mixed up, this part of Calhoun County. We have, we have some challenges in getting residents to everything, whether, whether it's healthcare, whether it's work, um, whether it's shopping. And we have the Albion-Marshall Connector, but it's, um, it's not a sustainable, um, service based on the funding mechanism that's in place. So, this is an opportunity to look at, how can we get a countywide regional transit system in place? And the starting point of that is the planning mechanism. So, this is a request to support the, um, the application for a grant application. Um, the state is approximately a hundred seventy-five thousand dollar grant. There's a twenty percent match in, um, all of the component, um, municipalities are seeking funding, um, from their community foundations or various other sources that might be supportive of, of making those matches possible. Um, the other partners that are involved include, uh, in addition to Battle Creek and the county are Albion Springfield Marshall and the Village of Homer. So, we're asking for your support, um, in regards to this grant application.
Are there any questions or comments or concerns from council? Regardless, Councilmember Lawler?
So, um, this grant will provide, um, transportation, um, from Albion to Marshall, Albion to Homer, like that, or just in the city itself?
If I could, the, the exact stop points have not been identified. Looking at how can we maximize, one, there's some existing systems in Cheltenham Albion-Marshall Connector, as well as the system in Battle Creek, but hope we possibly leverage those resources out there with some additional funding to make a, a connection between, really between Battle Creek all the way to Albion and, um, Homer, including Marshall and, and some of the other communities as well. And where, where are the needs at? So, part of it is a needs assessment and identifying where would the ridership be, and what would make the most sense in terms of routing.
So it's...
Thank you.
So it's similar to, like a planning?
Yes.
Like a planning grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Barnes?
I would like to share with the public, uh, and council, we received the review. The review is, um, really letting us to know that there's a regional transit system that they're trying to put in place. Grand Rapids has it, Ann Arbor has it, and it's, uh, really a plan of action to make us accessible to the rest of the region. It will be a planning situation, and if you can, you know, some of you can have my book, and you can run copies off for each other, so you can see the big picture in the whole system. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from council? Okay, uh, seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Uh, agenda item D, discussion approval, uh, of the Albion Malibu Brewing Company, LLC, that the alleyway sidewalks are gonna, kinda discussion of what the options are.
So moved.
I guess moved in su- I, I, I take Marissa's as support. Okay.
Mayor and council, I, I believe the principals of the, um, Albion Malibu Brewing Company are present, and if I could ask them to come forward as well. And essentially, um, they're moving forward with their project, and they need, um, I need some direction from you. Um, one of the things that they want to look at is relative to the alleyway immediately behind the property. Um, they need to locate some of their, um, mechanics, such as the chilling system, I believe, um, in that area. So, the decision from the city is whether we want to sell or lease that, um, alleyway to them. Um, and then the other one, as you recall in some of the earlier presentations, they are interested in having the outdoor seating area and the sidewalk, um, that would be expanded as part of the, um, Superior Street, um, project. And do we want to sell or lease that space as well? We would, no matter what, we were required to have a continuing easement so that we can have access for utilities and things of that nature. But in a nutshell, we, um, before Colin went ahead and started drafting the document, he didn't wanna do it two ways. We wanted to get some direction on if there was a preference from, from them, as well as, um, from, from you as, as the, um, elected body, on whether we wanted to sell or lease these spaces.
Do, do you, do you have any comments? Could you clarify, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think, in a nutshell, you know, we're here to make sure that we can answer questions. We wanna, we wanna tee this up for you guys, uh, and be as transparent as, as we can, since we have from the beginning of this project. Um, what we're looking specifically to kinda reiterate, you know, what, what Cheryl's already said, there's a, there's a couple of pieces that we need in outdoors. The, the biggest one is a glycol chiller that will power the cold storage space, as well as the fermenters for the microbrewery. Um, they're, they're kinda big, they're kinda heavy, and, uh, the property that we have is landlocked. It's sidewalk and alley space all the way around it. Um, so, getting the, the ability to get, um, some space in that back alley for that, as well as a couple of other things, like bulk carbon dioxide, um, items like that, uh, is, is fairly critical for us to be able to move forward with the production microbrewery, uh, at that location. Um, the seating, we have, we've, we've brought images, we have more images. We'd be more than happy to share our proposal. Um, we're, we're working with, um, Jim Linderson, with MDOT, with, with the other entities that are involved in the, the curb, uh, bump outs to get some more information about what the capabilities are along Ash Street, uh, in the, in the south side of the building. Uh, we think that for Albion, this is a really exciting change to the type of business that's downtown, and being the southmost business on that strip, we think the, the opportunity to have the, a new look of people outdoors in Albion, or outside in a, in a cafe-style seating, uh, really changes the feel of, of the downtown and can, can really be a positive momentum going forward. So, happy to ask and answer any questions.
Councilmember French?
I, I would move that, that we sell this alleyway for a dollar, and then, uh, to the Albion Malibu with the idea that we get right of first refusal, should that business move elsewhere, or the ownership of that property change hands.
Councilmember Barnes?
I would ask that John Tracy, uh, gives us some, like, overview on the regulations, and what effect would it, it has for a throughway there, uh, prior to, uh, Councilman French's, request.
John Tracy, Director of Planning, Building, and Code. Uh, what I just handed out is to give you a little bit more of an idea of what type of dimensions we're looking at, and what currently is behind, uh, the, uh, microbrewery, along with the other buildings and that four hundred block. One of the things, uh, that a lot of people have not realized in the past is what's been considered to be an alleyway all the way through, running in parallel with Superior Street on the west side, from Ash Street to Erie Street, is not actually an alleyway. Uh, there's only a portion of it that's actually alleyway, you know, and city, by the city. The majority of that back there is actually owned by, uh, properties. Uh, for example, the four hundred block that you've heard of, that, uh, or the four hun- number four hundred south Superior, uh, that you've heard of, that's going to become four apartments and, um, a business downstairs. They actually own that property behind it. Everybody's thought of as being an alley for years and years. Uh, same with a few other businesses. So, the actual length of the LA back there is approximately a hundred eleven feet long by eleven feet wide. Uh, currently, they're looking at, uh, purchasing what's directly behind them. You have the public parking lot that is also back there located, so, uh, you still have access back in to the other buildings. Uh, as far as on the right-of-way on the south side, the street itself is thirty-two feet from curb to curb. Uh, and their proposal would be looking at, uh, if the city would allow for them to use that right-of-way and part of, or the, uh, parking area immediately to the south there, which is approximately three spaces, uh, whether it be six foot out or eight foot out. So, let's take, take that in consideration. It's required that, no matter what they have there on, whether it's city or if it's leased or, or purchased, that there's at least five foot of concrete sidewalk all the way around for pedestrians to still, uh, move through and around that area. So, um, any questions?
One que- so, I, I believe Planning Commission has already...
Planning Commission has, well, a couple of different things have already transpired. Uh, originally, they have received the zoning for a tavern and restaurant, and Planning Commission has also, uh, reviewed their, uh, special use as, uh, brewing beer on-site and having wine. So, uh, everything else up to this point has been approved for the microbrewery.
The, so, and the other question I had is, so, um, for traffic that's headed east on Ash Street, that's basically there, but if someone's turning from Superior, they're turning west, what?
It, if they're turning west, primarily what it'd be is ti- somewhat similar to the bump outs that will be down the rest of the streets downtown, uh, except it'd just, just be carried further to the west and, um, so you're, you're actually, like I mentioned before, you're eliminating about three parking spaces. The opposite side is, currently has no parking at all, so it's not as if you're going to, um, have a tight squeeze there between, uh, west and south, or west and eastbound traffic.
Are there any other? Councilmember Reed?
One question. On the, the Ash Street side, um, it's gonna be open air, right?
Correct.
Okay. Are you gonna be serving liquor there?
That's, that is your...
So the, it will be attached to, to the brewery? It would be an outdoor, an outdoor seating area where people can sit and consume products?
'Cause I'm just wondering, I mean, you've got the library right across the street.
Mm-hmm.
You have a lot of children programming going on at the library. I would not like to see that.
The, it'd be, this will be contained within that area. I mean, it, this will be, it will not be in egress directly into that beer garden. It'd be ab- accessed only through the brewery itself.
So it will not? Okay, so you're saying to me, it will not be liquor being served outside to where children who might be going to the library can see that?
No, I'm not saying that.
You're not saying?
No.
Uh, do you have a, is there something you can say? Oh, okay. Councilmember Barnes?
My, my concern is that out, there is a portion of that that is out. It's described as the alley here. I just wanna make sure that the other businesses are not interrupted with their trash pickup for the entrance and the exit on either side going towards the top.
Which, which will still be access off of the parking area.
Thank you.
Uh, one, one of the things, uh, I believe probably seeing the drawings and such, uh, there, there's a couple of different things to also take into consideration. Whether that be on public or on private, they are required to annually, uh, obtain a permit. Uh, if at any time that there is, uh, a problem that occurs, or if it becomes to be unlawful, uh, the city has the right to, um, take away the permit, bottom line, for, for the cafe, so...
I don't mind the cafe. I don't mind the inside drinking, but I would not like it to be out where children could see it. Just like I say, the library does a lot of programming for children, and that's directly across the street. I am a child advocate. I would not like for them to be in, in...
I understand. Uh, call. I was supposed to tell you a turn.
So, in, in reviewing this, one of the things that, that I discussed with, um, with, uh, John, or code enforcement, um, and, um, and with the managing, is, you know, I, I don't really, um, I think the alleyway is a pretty simple thing. It's just, uh, property for basically putting equipment there, and it's not gonna interrupt the alley. So, I don't think, I mean, if you wanted, uh, my take, from a legal perspective, I think probably the option that makes more sense is to just sell that. Um, what I think the city should consider as it relates to the seating area is a little, a little bit trickier in that, um, you know, if you're gonna sell it, there's, there's easements and, and, and rights of way that we need to consider. But if you're gonna lease it, um, my suggestion to the city is that there would have to be, given that there's gonna be, um, food service or alcohol service, that there would have to be a, a fairly significant liability policy where the city is listed as an additional insured and, uh, were indemnified. Um, but those are the two considerations that I think you should keep in mind when, when talking about the Ash Street aspect of it.
So the, the question that I had to, uh, proprietors, is there a preference for purchase or lease on your part? Is that what?
It would be purchase.
Okay.
Um, in, in terms of having control of that space and potential ability to make the, is, is, some of the drawings have indicated, uh, potentially to make something that's a, a more permanent and more, uh, structural, sound, controlled space versus something that would be brought up and down season to season, understanding that we're still gonna have to have a seasonal application for the outdoor seating. Um, that being said, I think if, uh, if a purchase is off, it would, were to be off the table on Ash Street in particular, we'd be willing to, to discuss any options that, that move us forward on this project.
And then I, I'm, I'm sorry, you said, uh, before I could ask the other question, John, but, um, so, in terms of, so, when I'm... so in terms of, so what I'm looking at right now, you see the parcels. If they were to be purchased, would those additional spaces be, I guess, joined with the main parcel of the building or would they remain separate or?
If they were purchased, they'd be required to
Okay.
Become combined with the existing subject property.
Okay. Have there any, oh, Councilmember French?
So, I think I made a motion, which was that we sell the properties to the brewer, the brewing company for a dollar. A draft language that responds to our, to the attorney that therefore indemnifies us from legal action that should issue to become.
Well, a couple, a couple of things. So, the item on the agenda was discussion approval. And I guess there was, there were two, I guess, supports for that and I had, as prominent area, I considered you a support. Were you supporting that motion?
I would actually, well, I got to make this commentary. I would ask that the language be written up first. I support the motion to give them the go-ahead, but I would rather have that language written out because it's a legal situation.
Well, and to be clear, what I was suggesting is, I think the alleyways are, you know, there's nothing going to be done there other than storage equipment. Where the indemnification comes into play is if you were to lease the Ash Street property. Now, if we're just selling it, it's their property, you know, that's on them and I don't think if everything would put indemnification language into the transfer of the property, but if we're going to lease it, I would say that the city, because we're retaining ownership and kind of the mantra of civil litigation is you sue as many people as you can to get into as many pockets as you can, so obviously there's that potential with, you know, any restaurant or beverage service entity. So, if you go the lease option, I would say we need that indemnification, that insurance, but if we're going to sell it, that's probably not going to be an issue.
Okay. Councilmember Spicer?
I guess this is probably forecited, but what would happen if we were to sell to the brewing company and then, God forbid, they go out of business because I want to come visit? But what if they were to go out of business? Would that go with them then and then the city would just be separated apart or?
Well, it would be, it would be their property, you know, but there's, I mean, we can do things like rights of first refusal, but it depends on what happens with the property after they go out of business. I mean, they may, I don't know, maybe they sell some other business that comes in and uses the space. There are things that we can do, but, I mean, if we sell it, it's theirs.
Right, that's...
So, what?
So, that would just be, we're just giving up a piece, if that happens, the city would just be giving up a piece of property that it owned, something that's not of great value?
It's just that section of, I guess, what would be described as what's currently now sidewalk that runs parallel to that building and the idea is to build a bumpout such that the sidewalk will now go around the seating area. So, I mean, yeah, the value of that area is probably nominal at best.
So, the one, I guess...
We would retain easement still for utilities and all that.
I support the project because we've supported it so far through, you know, the Council, Planning Commission. The word of caution though, I'm hesitant to put a dollar value to the sale of that at this point because we weren't really kind of briefed on that. That was, that's kind of, so, you know, I could support that, but I think that that needs to be, I think the question was for the council whether or not we were comfortable with leasing or purchasing and I think the dollar figure part of that should be separate from that because that wasn't really part of what we were being asked. I think it was about whether or not we wanted to lease that. So, you know, unless there's some kind of extreme pressing time concern about that, I'd like to have that separate because that wasn't part of what we were briefed on, so.
Mayor, if I could, if we have direction to prepare the document relative to the purchase of the alley and the existing sidewalk area, we can look at negotiating the price based on the assessed value, which I would think would also be nominal, but we could proceed if we get that direction from you. And if I could just take a moment and ask Jim Linderson, the Director of Public Services, to come forward. The question wasn't raised, but I just wanted to get verification on if the street access is not going to be encumbered because of this expansion of the sidewalk, if it's meeting acceptable standards for streets.
Well, for the benefit of council and the community, in that alley, there is a sizable sanitary sewer main, which I think we can make arrangements for as far as an easement goes, but I think that we need to maintain that easement so that we have control over that sanitary sewer main. That is my biggest concern at this point. I've talked with the individuals from the brewery. They're in tune with that and they're willing to work with us on that, so I think it's a workable type of situation, but I do think that we need to maintain an easement on the city's behalf for that utility. Thank you.
And the street access?
I don't see an issue there either. Given the data that I've seen on it, I think that the bumpout will still allow enough traffic lane for the passage of east-westbound traffic without an issue. They're going to move the sidewalk supposedly out around the beer garden area, if you will, so they're accommodating pedestrian traffic and I think that's a great thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I guess a friendly suggestion, if we could just, I don't know if we need a full vote for an opinion on selling or purchasing, but I think that that would probably be appropriate in there because basically what I was getting to is nothing in the brief is telling us how much the property's worth. That was the heart of my concern. Councilmember French?
So, I will revise my motion to direct the city manager and city staff toward a purchase agreement, sale agreement between the Alvin Mallory Brewing Company and the city for the sale of the alleyway space and the sidewalk space adjacent to the brew above and that those terms be brought to council at a later meeting at our soonest convenience so that we can approve it.
So, a motion, have a second.
I support it.
Moved and supported. I'll do a roll call, make it official.
Can we have a discussion?
Oh, yeah.
In that motion, I would ask that we as council, prior to any final vote, that we get the true specifications of the specs far as the square foot that we're giving away or selling or leasing in. So, it would be on record because it's going to have to go on the title when they get the property. So, we should have that read it, dot I's, cross our T's, and move forward. Thank you.
Okay. No other comments? Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Agenda item E, request approval of Michigan Economic Development Corporation grant. So, move. Motion. Support. Moved and supported.
Mayor and council, this may look familiar. This was before you previously and when we were accepting the grant for the improvement to our water system. And in the original contract that we received from Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC, what they were proposing was that half would be provided upfront, but then the other half, approximately 470,000, I guess, would be provided at the end of the contract period, which would mean that the city would have to float that amount for that period of time, which is not advantageous to us. Then they came back and said they would give us 25,000 upfront and the balance at the end. I won't tell you what I told them, but that didn't seem to work either. So, we finally reached an agreement, which makes sense for all the parties concerned and that's essentially that we will be receiving the 50% upfront and then the rest of the reimbursements based on our submission of purchase orders and receipts and so we'll get those monthly for the remainder of the contract. So, we're recommending your approval of negotiated terms.
And this is basically $950,000 for improvements in the water treatment plan?
Yes.
Water treatment. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns from council? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote please.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Agenda, agenda item F, request approval, letter of understanding with police officers, Association of Michigan, POAM, which is the local union. Is there a?
So, move.
Motion?
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Okay, so I, are there any questions? Okay, so I do have a question. So, this is for clarification, I want to make sure I was understanding. So, what we're doing, oh, thank you. What we're doing right now, are we saying that if we, there's no distinction in pay dependent on certifications for people who are being hired by the department?
I can explain a little bit. When I was hired back in 2000, I started here, I was a certified firefighter but not a police officer and they sent me to the police academy. At the time, I was paid 577 an hour to go to the police academy while another officer who was police certified but not fire was paid $23,000 a year to go to the fire academy. And so, the unions, to take care of that disparity, created the PSO-1 and the PSO-2 rates that we are currently being paid for people that aren't fully cross-trained. Part of the problem we're having is those rates have not gone up significantly compared to the rates that the officers are making and so there's a huge disparity between the people that first start here and we're having a hard time attracting people to these jobs who don't have these certifications because the pay is so low. And other agencies, especially law enforcement agencies, are paying much higher rates. And so, what I propose that we do is eliminate those two PSO, that PSO-1 and PSO-2 rates in order to attract more people to our agency with a higher rate of pay to start out with, which is our start rate, which is where they start at once they've received both of their trainings and our on-the-road training.
Okay, so basically I'll ask the question like this. So, if I want, well, not me, but person A wanted to become an officer and they had no certifications, no experience
Right.
and they're going to police academy,
Yeah.
what's their level of compensation?
The start rate, which I don't have in front of me, it's approximately $38,000 a year, I believe.
Okay.
Currently, it would be $23,000.
So, that's someone just off the street
Yep.
going to police academy?
It would be the same for anybody, it would be the starting rate for anybody who starts here, whether they have any training or not.
Okay, is that, are you saying that's in the, what you're asking or is that the current situation?
That's what we're asking. Currently, we have a PSO-1, which means you either have your police training or your fire training.
If I don't have either, what am I?
I'm sorry. I'm telling you the wrong thing. PSO-1 is no training.
Okay.
PSO-2 is either police or fire.
Okay.
And then the start rate is when you have both your trainings completed.
Okay.
Okay.
And so, if, let's say there's a municipality where, you know, that has a separate fire and police department and like you said, like a, you know, person A is a police officer
Right.
but not a firefighter and they come here, they're going to be at PO?
If they're a police officer and not a fire, they'd be at PSO-2 if they had one of the trainings.
Okay.
Which I, if I recall right, is about 28,000.
Okay. So, and then they get the certification and they go to the?
The start rate, yeah.
Okay, so the concern is that, and I'm just doing this so everybody's clear about it. So, the concern is that who, who, with our current setup, that's not attractive to which category of someone who's not certified in either, someone who's certified in just one or what, who is, who are we having?
We're not attracting people who are certified in both.
Okay.
So, we're sending them to either the police academy or the fire academy.
Okay.
And the last person that I hired, they weren't certified in either.
Okay.
And so, we're going to be sending them both to police and the fire academy.
So, in the new situation, the person with neither, would they be making the full?
They would be starting at the, everybody would be starting at the exact same rate, regardless of how much training you have and we have to send you to.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, part of this, if you recall, our past mayor and council had noted that our entry level compensation for officers was unusually low and that made it very difficult for us to attract qualified candidates. So, part of the thinking is that if we raise the hiring rate, we can attract candidates that are already qualified for hopefully police and fire, but at least one of those. So, there's some offsetting that we won't have to provide as much training because we'll be attracting candidates that already have qualified.
So, I guess my other question, just I'm curious, would it have made more sense just to collapse PSO-2 and the entry starting price just into that to say, okay, lease?
There's still a big disparity between that and the start rate that we have.
Okay.
And most police departments now are starting their officers at about $40,000 a year, even when they're sending to the police academy. So, we're almost $10,000 less than what other agencies are starting their people at, which makes it very difficult for us to attract people.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is if, if someone does have at least one of the certifications, wouldn't it make sense to say, okay, we'll do it, we'll put them at the 38,000?
Right.
But for someone with like no certifications, shouldn't there at least be a distinction between that and some, because with, well, I'm just, without the certifications, what can you do if we've hired you?
Well, they're going to be, they're going to be in the police academy initially anyways.
Okay.
We don't hire them until, the last person I hired, the last two people that we've sent to the police academy, their start date was the day the police academy started.
Okay.
So, they're 16 to 18 weeks at the police academy.
They're not on the road?
No.
Okay, so what would, what would be the con in saying if we met, I guess, because it makes sense to me at least if someone, because I think the neighboring, does Marshall have two, they have separate?
They have separate.
Okay, yeah, so let's say you had an officer who's Marshall who came here, who was a police officer. It would make sense to say, okay, okay, let's kind of just get rid of PO-2 and just put them at the entry pay. But for someone who's, who's, has neither certification, is not on the road, to?
Well, and this has been one of my difficulties in attracting minority candidates as well. Several of the people that I've talked to that have been interested have not been willing to leave the jobs that they currently have to come work here because of the pay difference that they would be taking on for that initial six months or whatever it is for that training period of time. So, it's just one of those things that I'm not attracting people that we want to attract to this job because of the low pay.
Do you have, do you have a comment?
No, I'm just commenting that really it's about trying to attract good quality candidates to our public safety department.
Okay.
I mean, the amount of savings for the city in that pay for that period of time is minimal. And I say the same thing to the people I'm trying to recruit, that it's a minimal period of time that you're going to be paid this, but they're not willing to leave their jobs that they currently have for that pay.
Councilmember Burns?
I experienced being hired by Alvin when I came out of Michigan State. He didn't have any certification. Alvin took me on as a non-certified person and sent me to the academy. In this day and age, it's even tougher now recruiting minorities, black female, black male, Indian, Hispanic, due to race relations, law enforcement in the urban area. Mr. Dunklin is here and he can speak for himself. That is one of the questions he shares with me at the barber shop. Maurice, why aren't we attracting more minorities? I've explained it to him too. It's a very difficult situation. Number one, socially. Number two, now with this pay scale, we compete, now, we're past Battle Creek, we're competing with Kalamazoo. We're in a range of competing with Grand Rapids to attract minorities to come in. Chief Kip didn't share some information that he has right now where he has on tap one or two minorities who are looking to come in to his department. And this aid, this wage scale helps attract them. And I'm trying to elaborate this in a way that you can understand. It's very difficult for officers of any situation coming into this field when they can bypass Alvin and go to Battle Creek, Kalamazoo, and Grand Rapids at a higher wage. The wage makes a difference. If they come in and go to training for six months, it is a small price to pay to bring this in. And Mr. Dunklin is here and if he chose to spoke, he would tell you that that is a high priority for the NAACP right now to bring your minorities into police force.
So, I appreciate that. I think just my concern is I just want to make sure that we've thought through.
Well, the other thing is, is when I'm budgeting for the year, knowing that I'm going to be hiring people, I don't know if I'm going to hire somebody who's got... gonna be hiring people, I don't know if I'm gonna hire somebody who's got, uh, you know, four years' experience, who's gonna come in at a higher rate, or somebody who has no training at all. So, we budget at that start rate regardless, because I'm hoping that I'm gonna find that person who's got both trainings?
Okay.
Who's not gonna cost the city that much more money to do that. But if I can't, we're, we're actually, end up saving the money. So, we budgeted at this start rate for these positions anyways. It's not that money that we don't have budgeted, um, I pay, because I can't budget knowing who I'm gonna hire in the future, so.
So, am I?
Oh, Councilmember Burns?
Am I hearing that this is an attempt to attract minority police officers?
Absolutely.
Okay. Never mind.
So, I guess the other question I have is, um, can you, 'cause I don't remember off the top of my head, but can you give me an estimate at the end of, well, if someone has no certifications, how much they'd be making in a police, in the police academy?
Twenty, or currently, I believe, is twenty-three thousand and some change. I don't know exactly what the number is.
Okay.
Twenty-four thousand, two hundred and twelve.
Okay, oh, that's right, there's two thousand, we just changed rates to seventeen, so I'm going off the sixteen rates.
Okay, so there's no way we could say thirty or thirty-five, at least for that?
But what, what are you saving for, for eighteen weeks? I mean, that's, that's the amount of time you're, you're gonna pay them.
We're, we're saving money, but I
Yeah, but, but the amount of money that you're saving is insignificant for the idea that somebody's gonna take a job in Kalamazoo or Grand Rapids because they're gonna pay them that money.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but even their starting rates are, you know, significantly higher.
Kalamazoo's starting rate currently is forty thousand dollars a year, I believe.
Yeah, so.
We're starting at thirty-eight, there's not a big difference.
Yeah.
Now, the problem is, is that they're topping out at sixty thousand dollars a year.
Do they make, do they make any, to your knowledge, do they make any distinction between certifications? Is there?
Not to my knowledge, no. They're sending people to the police academy, just like we are.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
Do we know what the starting rate is for police departments our size? Because when we compare to Kalamazoo, they're a much larger city, um, so.
But that's who, but that's who we're competing against. That's who's taking all these candidates because they're paying much more. And we, by far, have the lowest pay, um, I believe, in the county when it comes to law enforcement, even topped out, so.
So, again, my question, do we know how much the starting pay is for police departments our size?
No, I do not.
Okay.
And then, the other question is, um, how, how many additional officers are you looking to hire?
I have two people that can retire currently, so, two people.
Okay.
And I have three people that this would affect immediately.
Okay, that was my, that was my question. Are there any other? Councilmember Burns?
Chief Kip, uh, I'm sure you've done your budget for these new hirers based on these, uh, people that are retiring. Is the money there right now to hire them?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Lawler?
Um, I just wanna say that, um, I think we should support this because these officers, um, put their life on the line for us every day. Some don't go home to their families, some do go home to their families. Twenty-four-two is really low, um, to me. I don't know, see how you made it with twenty-four-two, but, um.
I was a little less than that.
But, um, um, I think they, they, um, by them putting their life on the line for us, they deserve, um, they deserve this.
Are there any other? Councilmember Brown?
I just wanna say, I, I do recognize the need for minority officers here in Albion. I also, um, recognize that when you have a pay rate where someone with zero certifications can come in at the same rate as someone with, there needs to, in my opinion, there needs to be some, I support the higher rate, I'm just not sure I'm comfortable with the exact same rate, no matter what the certifications are.
Right.
So... Yes, that's where I'm at, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that.
And this, we, we took this to the unions first for their opinion on this. Um, as far as I understood, there were only two dissenting people in the union about these rates. So, um, obviously, there are people with different certification levels currently in the department, and those newer officers did not have issues with these rates, was my understanding, so. But the union voted to approve this the way this was set up, um, and changed their contract.
So then, I guess the ultimate, uh, the ultimate question I have then is, is, kind of was asked earlier, the two people retiring, what, what grade are they at?
They would, after four years, you're topped out here. So, you're making, everybody with at least four years' experience are, are making the same amount
Okay.
Of money, so, um, and, trying to figure out the numbers. I think there's only three officers
Okay.
That are at that rate currently because of the number of people that we've hired, so.
And, and for the, the three people that we have hired, who, who, this would be, I guess, a, a, immediately affect them, what's, what's the additional cost to the budget?
None, because I already budgeted for this amount in the budget originally, because I didn't know where we were gonna start.
Okay.
My concern was, um, yeah, my concern was, if I hired, we, we made an agreement, um, with the union last summer, I believe it was, um, where if you had four years' experience, you started at our step three, and if you had two years' experience, you started at our step two.
Mm-hmm.
That happened, where we were able to get a couple of people as a result of that, and we have one person that started in step three and one person that started in step two. Matter of fact, Kyle Wilson, the one that just started, started at step two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that was budgeted in because I had planned on that. And like I said, we budgeted for the start rate because I didn't know whether or not the person that we hired would have these qualifications or not.
Okay.
So, obviously, we didn't, because that's why we're sending some to the academy.
Okay.
Um, and your concern about the money from last year that we discussed, based on my projections, were roughly around fifty thousand dollars under budget in public safety budget, so there's more than enough money to cover that as well, so.
Thank you.
Are there, I'm sorry, are there, are there any other, uh, questions, comments, concerns from council?
Just one question.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you, Mayor, just a comment. I, too, have somewhat of a problem with, um, paying someone who, um, is not certified by the same salary as someone who's certified, only because I know that, I guess that's my background in human resources, is that there should be some, um, difference in pay there. But if the unions, you talk to them about it and they're okay with it, then I, I think I think it's a
I, and I totally agree with you. Um, like I said, back when I was hired, they created these two positions as a result of the disparities that we had in the contract anyways. Um, and, and all of the union agreed to this. As a matter of fact, I really agreed to it because it gave me a big bump in pay at, at the time. But times have changed just a little bit when it comes to recruiting in law enforcement. Back when I was hired, it wasn't difficult to find people, they were hiring people consistently, and throughout the last sixteen years that I've worked here, we haven't had that much of an issue of hiring people. Over the last two, three years, it's gotten a lot worse, it's been very difficult to find people. We've gotten, um, seven applications for a position at times, you know, and, and that's just crazy to me, because it used to be you'd get a hundred applications for every position at least. Um, so the pickings have been very slim. I think we've gotten some great officers as a result of being able to hire some local people that grew up here in Albion. Um, we, we've tried to equal it out between firefighting experience and police experience because it's just as important to us, and it's very important because the way we fight fire, that we rely on our off-duty people to come back and fight fire, that I need people that really wanna fight fire. So, um, out of the people that I've hired, I think only two of them that we've sent to the, or, I take that back, three of them that we've sent now to the fire academy, um, and then we've sent two people to the police academy, and the rest have had their training when they've gotten here, so.
Good, uh, if there are no other, other questions, we, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Um, let's see. City manager?
Thank you. Mayor and council, um, one, I want you to just give an update in regards from the assessor. Um, the December Board of Review was conducted on December thirteenth, and property owners were notified of the decisions. Um, changes due to the outcome of the board were updated on the assessor's, um, hearing role. Um, also, the assessing department has been working with the Calhoun County Equalization Department of Sales Studies for residential properties and reviewing their appraisal studies for select commercial and industrial parcels. These studies have helped to establish the two thousand seventeen land values and the economic condition factors for the city of Albion. The two thousand seventeen personal property statements and small business exemption affidavits have been mailed to all applicable parties for timely processing. I do want to remind the small business owners that you must return these forms in order to be exempt from the personal property taxes by the deadline. And, um, Tom, our Assistant Assessor, has achieved his Michigan Certified Assessing Officer Certification, um, in December, so we're very proud of him. And if you recall, we had your official photos taken, and we will put them on the website when we get everyone's bio information. I have the forms for three of you who have not given those to me yet.
The photos are right.
Oh, the photos are on, so we need your bio information. Thank you, Jill.
Yep.
Um, January twenty-third, um, is the six P M. tour. Oh, that's
Yes.
The tour of the school district, um, the Michigan Opportunity School. So, there is a tour prior to the school board meeting, Marshall School Board. So, that's at six P M. at Michigan Opportu- Marshall Opportunity School. And you've changed your special meeting to Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, um, and that's a special meeting at seven P M. for the appointments to the boards and commissions. And I just want to take a special note that, um, the Martin Luther King Day Celebration Day of Dialogue that was hosted by Albion College and, and in which the guest speaker was Milton Barnes was just really uplifting and, um, very motivating, and we are very proud to have him. We call him a hometown hero, even though he wasn't born here, reclaiming him, and he's claiming us, and he's offering that exceptional program at the school, at the Albion Community Center in the Marshall Opportunity School. But, um, it's a great program, and I understand that yesterday, there was a, a record number of young people, um, at the, at the gym, just enjoying their open gym periods, so we're very fortunate to have him giving back to Albion. And today, um, several of us, the mayor and council members, attended a networking meeting in Lansing. Uh, we talked with our state representative, Byzon, Senator Knopf, as well as representatives from a number of organizations on how we can continue the momentum that's going on in Albion. And, um, this was in partnership with Albion College, as well as Albion Community Foundation and Summit Point. February fourth is, um, the training scheduled for the Michigan Municipal League, that'll be eleven o'clock. We're looking to ha- at having that at the lovely Leddington Center, and we have to make arrangements for lunch, so that's from eleven to three. And, um, last week was also in conjunction with the Economic Development Corporation, their visioning session. And I'm pleased to let you know that one of their priorities will be focusing on the corridors, essentially Ayton and Austin Street, and how to beautify those areas and make it more attractive for, um, especially as people are coming off the freeway, we want to have a welcoming, um, look as people are coming into town. And they had asked for the city to take the initiative relative to, um, place-making and, um, place-scaping on the downtown corridors, so we'll be looking at, um, some suggestions, such as, um, yearlau- year-round lighting, because it's so attractive at holiday time, the lights, and we're trying to see what we can do to make it more attractive year-round. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Hey.
Go ahead, go.
I just wanted to add to the, there's no city attorney reported, so I just wanted to add. The, uh, if you recall, the council passed with the manager and I with, um, um, getting legal opinion from the bond attorneys, um, I just wanted to update the council that I did a conference call with, um, two of the bond counsel at Miller's Manfield, and they are currently in the process of bringing together a legal agreement for the city, so that is, wheels are turning, that isn't the worst. But you should have that to you, not to just
Thank you. Okay, are there any future agenda items from council? Oh, Councilmember Burns, and then Councilmember Brown.
I, I want to ask a couple of questions. Could you give us a report on how much they said this is gonna cost us?
I actually emailed them tonight, they're gonna, they're gonna send, um, a letter of engagement that will have their hourly rate. It's, based on my conversation with them, because it's, it's limited in its scope, it's not going to be, I don't think it's helpful to be sticker-shocked by it, I think it'll be very controlled, and I'm keeping an eye on how much time they're investing.
Okay, he, he is an attorney.
I wouldn't let them bill you more than I would bill you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Lawler, you have to leave.
Um, I would like to, um, add some type of discussion about, um, what we can do or what we cannot do with the, um, old union still building
Okay.
In precinct four.
Okay. Are there any other future agenda items? Councilmember Brown?
I would like to put on, uh, a discussion concerning the, um, city manager Cheryl Mitchell's, uh, aggregate total concerning her contract.
What?
The total amount of her contract. I would like to have a discuss, that on an agenda item for discussion.
All right. All right, I'm kinda
It's a gen- uh, agenda item concerning the city manager's contract. How much money she made? It's a discussion item.
I, before, we, well, we can talk after the meeting about that, because you can always put something on the ma- meeting, but I'm not, I wanna make sure I'm clear about, because there's protocol when you're talking about contracts, so.
Yes, there, the discussion, it's a discussion item. And it's not illegal to talk about the discussion. We're not talking about the intimate details of confirming or denying a contract, it's an agenda item for discussion.
Okay, we'll, we'll work that out, we'll, um, was there, was there another? Was it? Okay, I'm sorry, was there, was, oh.
Yeah, I do, I have
Councilmember Spicer?
I'd like to discuss the, um, I don't know if this is appropriate, but, um, with the approval of the single-hauler trash, we, um, prior to had raised the mill from two to three, so I'm wondering if it's appropriate to discuss lowering it, since when we decide to revoke on the single-hauler
Okay.
For future purposes.
Okay, um, are there any other future agenda, oh, agenda items? If not, the manager, you know.
Okay. Um, Mayor and council, I am very thrilled to also share with you that today marks the one-hundredth, um, celebration of the anniversary of the creation of the Albion Police Department. So, this year is a, a year of, um, celebration for our police department, I believe it's also the one-hundredth year for the city manager, um, being in Albion. It wasn't me, but So, we're looking forward to planning for some time of, some type of festivities around, especially the police department.
Are there any other future agenda items from council?
Did the bear ever get out of jail? Is it who?
Okay. Okay, seeing, seeing, uh, no additional future agenda items, and, and everyone's here, um, are there any citizens' comments? These are general comments, uh, are not tied to the agenda, but are there any other citizen comments this evening?
My name is Marvin Powell, one sixteen West Pine Street. I'd just like to say, um, I understand the tedious and grueling job that you, the mayor and all the council members have undertaken for Albion. I was born and raised in Albion, I love Albion. And, um, it's nice to see the city coming back to somewhat the way it used to be, and involving people in different projects and, and the precincts, the new council members and everything. And um I think sometime um we, I'll include myself, as citizens, we don't really um appreciate the job that that you are doing. And um but I'd just like to say that I appreciate.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
This week's.
Levita Weeks, nine seventeen Luther Drive. I just want to make one statement that I was not aware of, probably you are, but in talking to, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but the Granger, the Holler, we are not paying the full year for that. You're paying from April to November, correct?
For the lead.
For the yard waste. Right, I was under the impression we were paying fifteen-ten a month all year round, and that is not the case. We're not paying for the lead pickup other than April through November. That might make a big difference to people.
It's probably going to lower the price. Thank you. Are there any other citizen, oh, our county commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager Mitchell, and the residents of Albion, certainly good evening. My name is Gary Tompkins, I am your county commissioner for the seventh district. Our first meeting was rather uneventful, that kind of eased us into it as we started out, but I do have a few tidbits to share with you just as we move forward, and my communicative effort, if I may do so. First of all, we re-elected chairman, our chairman Derek King of fifth district as our chairman, again, for the second year. And in a change, we also elected Kathy Sudan as our vice chair in district one. She replaces Steve Frisbee, who was our fourth district representative. Our meetings will continue to be the first and third Thursdays of the month, with the exception being April, which is the equalization meeting, and that'll be at seven P M. In the third floor of the council chambers. Uh committee happenings, uh committee happenings will be, actually confirmation of committees will be taking place on this Thursday's, the January nineteenth meeting. And unless something of difference changes, the following committees are going to be the committees I'll be serving on. First of all, the senior and village allocation committee, the area agency on aging, soon to be renamed the Carewell Services Southwest, workforce development, the Trailway Alliance, Homer Lake Management Board, the Potawatomi Resource Conservation, and I'll be the legislative liaison for the county commissioners. In addition to that, I also do want to recognize the fact is I'm very, very proud and humbled by the opportunity to serve on the Albion Homer United Way Board. Certainly, I do appreciate that, it's an opportunity I do cherish, so thank you very much for that. And then, real quickly, Terry, Terry Lowe, those of you that may know Terry, she's our election specialist at the uh, in the uh, excuse me, in the clerk registered deeds office. She was named Kalamazoo County Employee of the Month for the month of January. She's got twenty-four years of service, and anybody who's been a candidate certainly can recognize she is a, she is amazing when it comes to making sure we're all on track and getting our information in. Um but besides, by that, even clerks that are, that certainly work with her, that's a, it's an excellent, she's, she's wonderful what she does, so we certainly appreciate that. Uh January is National Rate on Action Month. For the month of January, the county health department is going to be giving away free short-term test kits for the entire month of January. These kits are used to check for unseen and often misunderstood health risks, which may be occurring in your home. You've got an illness that you just simply can't figure out what it is, it's an opportunity to be able to have this test for free. You can certainly contact the county health department environmental office located at one ninety East Michigan Avenue in Battle Creek, or you can call two-six-nine-nine-six-nine-six-three-four-one. Just recently, I attended a workshop hosted by the M E D C on the redevelopment-ready communities. It's an interesting uh opportunity for those communities, such as Albion, to certainly be involved in that process and what they offer. And then, if I may, may, Mr. Mayor, may I approach the council, I would like to.
All right, so.
Pass this out, if I could, please. I do have a few copies for residents if they're interested in this, and I'll explain what this is. One of the things I talked about, one of the things I realized during the campaign was that the residents, in many cases, didn't know, even know what a county commissioner did. I've been many questions, people, I would knock on doors, talk to people, and they'd go, we don't know what, what do you do? So with that being said, what I did is I have created essentially that communicative method, which is what I call the county connection. And this is going to be a one-page, maybe a little bit longer newsletter that'll be distributed at the end of each month by email, and if you don't have email, there are other sources. I've talked to the, I've talked to the library. If you have any suggestions where I can post this, certainly, it'll have the opportunity to be able to display this, so that you actually know what's going on. Certainly not in, not only in the county, but what's going on and what I'm doing uh within, within our district. Uh if I may, just go through this real quickly, uh just be real quick. You'll notice at the top, it is county actions and discussions, which you'll notice is that'll be information that the county board will either take action on or discussion on relative specifically to the seventh district, or if it's, if it impacts everybody in the county, certainly that'll be communicated to you there. Committee happenings, any committee happenings that I undertake, that I'm part of, I will be able to share that with you i- in in that section, which is the middle section. And then road updates and other happenings, anything other that's going on, certainly that I can communicate to you to let you know what's going on as we move forward. You'll notice on the right side, you'll notice that those will be all the committees that I'll be serving in and all the organizations I'm part of. So and it's an excellent opportunity for me there, and then you'll notice monthly meetings. This, this will be updated monthly, so you'll know exactly what meetings I'm going to and where I'll be at all times. Because it's important, is again, part of my campaign issue was the fact is accountability and transparency. If you're going to elect somebody, you want to know that they're not just sipping a cup of coffee, but they're actually out working and and doing the best they can for the district in which they represent, which is you folks as well. If you're interested, certainly, you can certainly contact me by email, my email's here, my phone is there, but the opportunity is not only for yourself, but also for residents, that if they were to get this, they could also be able to call me or email me and ask me about questions, additional questions and concerns they may have. Because again, it's for me to be accessible and available to you folks and the residents, certainly of the city of Albion as well. So I just wanted to share that with you, and again, that'll be the end of the month, if anybody's interested. Like I said, I'll be providing it by email, if you'd like to email me and ask, certainly submit your at, your email address, or if you have any suggestions where I can post it, again, I've already been talked in the library. Oh, yes, ma'am, you sure can, absolutely. Because again, I'm here for you, and I want to make sure that I communicate with you on an ongoing basis, so you feel comfortable with me and we can have good dialogues. So and again, I want to, real quickly, I do want to echo the sentiments of city manager Mitchell in congratulating uh the Albion Public Department of Public Safety on their hundred-year anniversary of of serving and protecting the community of Albion, because that's an important aspect, and Chief Kip and his officers continued in that tradition, so certainly I want to congratulate them as well. Is there any questions for me this evening?
Well, I, will you be able to stay after the meeting for?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yep, and I'll be here after the meeting if anybody's posted, certainly, and I'll do that. Like I said, if you have any suggestions where I can post it, I will certainly be, to be available, that I can get it to that and have it posted for the month, okay? Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Mayor Brown, council, Richard Lindsay, uh would just want to mention real briefly, uh at the meeting in beginning of December for the Cronin Foundation, the Cronin Foundation, uh which is based in Marshall, and basically the Cronin sisters that ran the Cronin uh department store in Marshall forever, that's a big chunk of money basically to be used within Marshall Public Schools for um anything, for basically for a public purpose. The Cronin Foundation agreed to fund a quarter of the demolition cost of their own school, it's been one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um the, the application was made by the land bank relative to that. I'm hopeful, we were obviously waiting for the election of the new treasurer to come in, and we're hopeful that we'll see a demolition of that building uh here in two thousand seventeen. This goes back to something, I think you asked the superintendent back last year when we made a presentation here, so hope to see that be a nice green site sometime in two thousand seventeen. Deraple School.
Oh, I didn't hear that, oh.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so good news.
Thank you. Uh if there are no other citizen comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Moved and supported, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Thank you.
We just signed a lease for you.
You know, I'm going to ask the email, I don't know how they want to do it, but like, I I know Michigan passed that constitution amendment, but you can't.